So I will call the March 28th work session meeting to order. We welcome elected officials. That was the Sheriff Gillett, thank you for being here. We bring the assignment sheet forward as we turn off our cell phones. And we're grateful to have this morning Reverend Kevin Beeman with Christian Alliance of Pastors to bring our invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here Kevin. Do we all stand and bow our heads? Most gracious Father, we thank you so much Lord for being here this morning. We didn't have to be here, many people did not wake up this morning Lord God, so to you we give thanks. We thank you oh Lord, because as we embark upon this day, the decisions made here today affect your people, your kingdom Father God. We pray for the commissioners here Lord, that they have a clarity of mind, clarity of understanding, great stewardship Lord, and a love for your people. Lord, we thank you this day, we thank you so much for this day Lord God, and we will be honored that we share in it Lord God, as representatives of you. Father, we thank you. We pray for this meeting to go on without hitch Lord God, without problems. We pray and we stand here because you are the final authority on all things. We thank you Lord for this blessing, your grace and mercy upon us, in Jesus's name, amen. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, beautiful words. Sublet all weekend. The March 14th, 2017 work session minutes and the board meeting minutes are available for your review. I'd like to also announce that on the table in the back there are the sheets handouts for other meetings, important meetings in Paulding County that we would encourage to be a part of. Under the positively Paulding segment, the Paulding Nutritional site is the title of this short video.
I'm Allee Falls, I'm the nutrition site manager for Paulding County in Dallas. We serve meals on wheels to Paulding County residents who are eligible for our program, and if you're interested in that, just give me a call at 770-443-1100. We work closely with the county, with Betty and her activities, but we also have our own program that is designed for our members who come into the center each day. We serve hot meals to clients at the center each day. Usually about 11 o'clock we serve our meal, and Monday through Friday, just have to sign up for it, we'll be glad to get you signed up if you're interested. In addition, our focus for our Meals on Wheels program is that we serve about 70 clients per day, Mondays through Fridays, a hot meal for residents that might not otherwise be able to eat a hot meal each day. We have programs that include frozen meals for clients who live far out in each ends of the county that we cannot deliver to each day. Our program is funded through the area agency on aging, known as AAA, and so if you hear that lingo, you'll understand that it's for the area agency on aging. The procedure is that you would call our office, again 770-443-1100, and we then get your name, send that information to screeners in Rome at the Gateway Screening Agency. They refer back to me, the client or potential client that needs the meals, and we get them signed up that way. We also offer a variety of events for our clients who come in to the center as well. Our fax number is the same as our phone number, 770-443-1100. And just a little bit about myself, I'm not a native of Paulding, but we have been here for about 17 years. My husband and I have three grown children and eight grandchildren, one a brand new one, and we are all active in the community as well as my service to the nutrition center. Feel free to call, we look forward to having you, and it's a pleasure working with Betty and the county to incorporate this program to benefit our seniors in Paulding County.
Super program. Clarification on meetings, there's normally a 2:00 planning zoning meeting, we have no applications for today, so there will be no 2:00 planning zoning meeting today. I'd like to announce the first job fair hosted by Paulding County Board of Commissioners on April the 19th at the Watson Complex here in this building from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. down in the cafeteria area. Put that on your calendars. The Board of Commissioners along with the Georgia Extension Association of Family and Consumers Science Awards Committee would like to congratulate Paulding Channel 23 staff, Jody Martin and Jeff Arkenz, for their entry for the GDA FCS, NEA FCS Communications Television Video Program Award that placed second in the entire big state of Georgia, second or first, the largest state east of the Mississippi. This is Carol, Mary Carol Sheffield is going to enlighten us on that, but thank you for being here Mary Carol.
Good morning, thank you John and ladies for having me this morning. I'm very excited for Jeff and Jody and for the Family and Consumers Science Agent and County Extension Coordinator who does this county's season called Pepper. She worked with them to produce this video, and she nominated through her professional association for this award. The actual official presentation of certificates will happen at their annual meeting in August in Norcross, but we wanted to go ahead and recognize their award, and we wanted everybody to kind of see a little snippet, so I think this is about a minute and a half long piece of the video, but it was a great little piece, and you can catch the full video on YouTube or on the PC23 website as well, you'll probably catch it sometimes on our cable channel.
Hi, I'm Susan Culpepper with UGA Extension, and today I wanted to share with you Grandma's Chicken Pot Pie. This is a great recipe. I've tested it and made it healthier, and it's very easy. For a copy of today's recipe, you can visit uga extension slash Paulding. Also, I'd love for you to email me, tell me if you made the recipe and what you think of it, and if you'd like some other similar easy freezer meal recipes.
Just never know what you're going to learn at a Board of Commissioner meeting.
All right, well thank you all, and congratulations to Jeff and Jody and Susan. We appreciate your time tonight.
I think Jody and Jeff get to go to an August conference for an award and even compete nationally next fall, so they come out second in the nation. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Jennifer Dunbar, our Communications Training Officer with Paulding County 911-8911, and David Mumford is going to elaborate on this, so thank you.
Jennifer Gordon's away up front. You get to go up there in front of everybody. Morning. It's my privilege to be able to award the Public Safety Appreciation Award for March to Communications Training Officer Jennifer Dunbar. Jennifer began her employment with Paulding County December 15th, 2008, and she's been a Communication Training Officer since January 14th, 2017. During her employment, Jennifer has proven to be a dedicated to her job and an excellent employee. As a Training Officer, she's responsible for training and monitoring of our newly hired Communications Officers through all phases of our Training Program. We have a very intense Training Program that can take up to a year to get someone through, and it would be meaningless if we didn't have trainers like Jennifer to guide our employees. She's one of our strongest law enforcement dispatchers, and this came from some folks who watch your work. It's a very demanding position within any 911 center, and at any given time, the person working law can have upwards of 30 officers that they're handling over that one talk room, kind of like an air traffic controller. They're monitoring their progress and their safety of our responders, and she excelled at this. I'm going to go into our quality assurance program during my department report, but I brought some quality assurance performances that Jennifer has, just to brag on her a bit. We have a minimum of 80% of our quality assurance, so when we receive your calls, we have to score at least an 80%, and if you fall below that, then we start looking at quality and such to see, or maybe performance issues. But for January, her call takings scored were 96.25, her law enforcement dispatch scored with 100, and her fire department, fire dispatch scored with 97.5. In February, she had 100 all the way across for call taking law and fire dispatch. And then in March, to date, 97.5 call taking and 100 on law dispatch. So those are very, very good quality. Jennifer has three kids, and she's grown up in Paulding County, and so she continues to serve the community where she grew up, and we're lucky to have her as one of our first first responders, which is what we like to call her.
The last announcement, the chairman, I would be myself, of the Board of Commissioners will notify the four post commissioners of staff and department and meetings as part of the normal distribution list of attendees, which will enable at least one of the post commissioners to always be present. Under bid awards, we discuss actions to award the Hot in Place Recycle Asphalt Project to the lowest responsive bidder, Gallagher Asphalt Corporation, in the amount of $528,698.24. Mrs. Pollard and Mr. Green are going to evaluate on this.
We're going to attempt to cover this. On Friday, March 17th, we received bids for the Hot in Place Recycle Asphalt to resurface 9.3 miles of asphalt on Pleasant Road, Road, Deverie Road, Harmony Road, and Carson Thompson Road, and we only had one participant. However, DOT has evaluated those, the price, and it appears that it's a reasonable price, and so we're recommending a reward to Gallagher Asphalt Corporation in the amount of $528,698.24.
If you like how to, I'll explain what the process is about, what it's kind of due to us. Basically, as our roads age, they deteriorate to varying degrees. Ideally, we would resurface our roads before they show any significant deterioration. We're not able to do that often, and sometimes we let the road completely fail and dig it up, which is a good thing we can do. But in between early resurfacing and completely digging up a road, there are a lot of things we can do to a road to repair it, and one of the techniques that we have used is in-place, I call stabilization, where we grind up the road and make a road base out of it and then pave over it. This is a little different, we are actually going to heat up the road, the top inch and a half to two inches, and restore it. Basically, we have some rolling propane tanks that go down the road, heat up the pavement so it's softened, and then we have a paving crew that scarifies the road, adds liquid binder back into the road, and when it's done, it's a nice clean road that we can work from the final surface coat after that. It's cost savings of at least 20% in our view, and it could be more dependent on how the overall project goes and how we resurface it. Probably use in-house crews to put the final topping later on, that will result in some additional savings. It's kind of a pilot project for us, so we're doing some lower volume roads on the west side of the county to see how it works, see if we're satisfied with the results. It's not a good candidate for roads that don't have very much asphalt on them, that you need something to recycle and need some kind of a layer underneath that to service the base for that before you start. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, glad to report on how this works afterwards.
It's probably your assistant George Jones that thought it was a sexy title for it.
Hot in place. George won't take credit, this has been around for a long time. In fact, like Gallagher, the company that we've received the bid from, they've been in business for 90 years, and they work all over the country. They've worked in our neighboring counties, and we've looked at somebody that'll work, that think it'll work good for us. Again, we're going to study the benefits and see if there's something we want to increase over time.
Well, I would like to take this opportunity to embarrass you, I don't think the post commissioners will mind me saying this, on behalf of all of us, we're very proud of all our department heads, and all of us have ridden around many miles around Paulding County with Scott Green, and we're so aware of how knowledgeable he is, you can go on any street in the county, and I think he knows the name, and where it breaks on the repair list, or you know, the list of what roads are worse than others, he's got all that memorized. But he's a forward-thinking, walking ahead leader, he cares about people, and I would just like to recognize you Scott for all the work you do, and this is just one example of it.
Thanks so much.
So now we get to reports from committees and departments, so we'll bring David Mumford back up to give us an update on the E911 Department.
I've got a couple of things to go over. The first one is the update on the building, because I know everyone's interested in that. We've seen this several times, that's the artist rendering of where we are. This is the status of the building currently, that all utilities are in place and everything is functioning on the final utility. The AKA units are in place, the building is being dried out, and as a matter of fact, this week they're doing the final cleanup of the building and getting all the carpet, all the flooring is down, the flooring in the 911 center is complete, security fencing is about 90% complete, the parking lot is paved and striped. We have office and the dispatch furniture scheduled for delivery. We expect the dispatch furniture will be installed August, not that far out, April the 10th and 11th, and then the office furniture is about 60% complete, and we're going to start hopefully taking delivery of that next week and taking stages, so we don't have to have to call at one time. It's just a very large order. Right now, the tentative move date into the new center is at around April 26th. I won't give you that as a solid date right now, but there's still some items that might cause that to extend out, but right now, we're looking pretty good for 26th. And we're working on a transition plan with our vendors, I'll be more than happy to discuss details of that with you individually, but there are some, there's security issues involving the transition plan, so it is underway with our vendors and our, we have backups in place to keep us going during that transition. So it'll be invisible to the public, that's the goal. And then the responders may see a little bit of us having to work off the pen and paper instead of computers for you to operate. Other than that, we have enough, we upgraded our systems to be redundant enough over the last several years that our downtime, there will be no downtime, and if for some reason we did, we're going to have the mobile command vehicle in place so that we can relocate that and continue to operate. We have a lot, three different levels of redundancy. And if we had to, we'd transfer to another 911 center, I don't ever see it more than This is where we started out, if you remember, several months ago, and this is where we are now. The building is 98% complete, they're, all the handrails are in, the, like I said, the flooring, the exterior is completely done. A view of the rear, the tower is up. Saturday, we're going to be out with diversified, and we're sitting in tennis up on the tower. The cabling, for the most part, is done inside the building. We're ready to be able to set our furniture up and set our systems in place. As a matter of fact, as soon as this presentation's over, we're going leaving unfortunately, and after that, I'm working on scheduling a UPS startup. That's just the exterior, security fencing is, now we actually have the barbed wire up, so it's even further along than this picture. The kitchen is done, we're waiting appliance delivery in about two weeks, so we'll have appliances in place, the employee lockers are installed, and that's the view out the rear of the break room, kitchen area. And that's the cabinets that were installed. Cut out waiting for all of our appliances to be delivered. The kitchen is designed and set up so we can survive in this building for up to five to seven days with everything that's in place, something that we have bunk rooms and stuff to keep us up and running. This is the emergency operations center, the, all the sound barriers are on the wall, sound absorbing barriers, carpets installed, the plastic is down just to keep the folks that are working inside from tracking mud in on the new carpet. And that's just another view, on the left, you'll see that this is the little cabinet that goes in, that's for maybe having folks working PIO and Public Information Officer stationed out there. This is the EMA side of the building. And this is the actual 911 center, our sound resistant, our sound dampening panels are up, the floors have been finished. That view is back towards the training room, which is the room on the right, and the one on the left would be one of our offices with the training manager. And this is just another view, that's the door that you see leads into our server room. We have IT, the county IT has a server room in this building, and 911 has a server room in this building, so we, county IT is going to be able to relocate some of their backup equipment to have it located away from, so that we have a more secure backup. Just another view of the room, like I said before, it's been finished, and all the cabling is ran through and forth, all there, and all the power is 100 EK forwards, just ready for us to set everything in place. That's the main conference room for the building. Probably in about a week, a plastic table will come out and a conference furniture will go in. This is where we're having our meeting, now we're actually meeting inside the building. The lobby area, and that's a view back towards the reception. And then if you ever, this kind of should have been at the end, but if you ever wonder why they charge $1,500 for replacing a light bulb, that's why. That's an 80-foot tower, and on a 300-foot tower, he has to go up and change the light bulb, so I wouldn't do that. That's why it's expensive. This is the break area outside of the emergency operations center. If we go full activation, where we have 60 people in there, then we have enough break areas and coffee machines to keep everybody alive in the period. And this is our supply and coffee area, which is something we desperately need now, if you've ever been in our building, we've got lots of stacked everywhere, and so this allows us to actually organize our supplies. And that's just a view from the outside. This will be the public entrance to the building, and it'll be open from 8 to 5, and they'll go into the reception area, and that's where they'll deal with our footwork and records and such. Just that internal door leading into the lobby. Caniforce is one of the lockers, almost done, actually the programe line on this now. Any questions on the 911 center? We're really making progress.
What if anything, you've got to know what would stop us going into 26th?
Issues with connectivity. So if we had any issues with, like AT&amp;T, as to, they've got to purchase a router that for some reason we didn't realize the data at the purpose, or they didn't realize. But there's some orders that they discovered they need to do, and so far, they've not said that this one to hold us up, but there's always that possibility. It will be technology related on part of our vendors, if we have, we're ready, or as our program goes.
That's the move-in date, that's not the grand opening?
It is not. We're going to try and have the grand opening date just prior to that. I'm shooting for the DOT meeting on the 25th, but we haven't, because if we do it before then, we're not going to have the furniture and stuff in place for folks to see what it looks like on the inside. So we're going to try and shoot for that, but it's not been set up officially yet, trying to get it scheduled by next week.
But we're still ahead of schedule, aren't we?
We're on schedule. I don't know that we're ahead of schedule, but we're on schedule. And we are still on budget. I won't say that we're far under budget as I would like us to be, but we're not over budget either. We're within our budget.
Gary Phillips, he may be shooting right now.
He wants his part of the building back, and I'm more than ready to give it to him. Any other questions?
I'm excited about it, good job.
We're, as it gets closer, we're excited, but we're also nervous. Moving on, 911 Center is a challenge.
Long time coming though.
The rest of my update, if you have in front of you, you've got our call-by visits for 2016, I just want to go over those with you really quickly. It should be a spreadsheet, a three-page spreadsheet. We, in 2016, we dispatched a total of 97,554 law enforcement calls, and that's throughout the county for all of our shared farming municipalities. Our fire department total law enforcement, fire department dispatch of 18,493 calls. This average is out to be about 267 law enforcement calls a day, and about 50 fire calls a day, and a total average of about 318 dispatch calls out of every 24 hours. On the second page, we took in, we actually processed 66,603 911 lines or 911 calls. That's a little bit of a decrease, however, the increase in non-emergency lines, we processed 150,758 non-emergent, when I say non-emergency, it's an admin line, we get emergency calls in those lines too. And then we processed 34 text to 911 calls. When we first instituted text 911, we processed about seven the first year, so that has increased every year, people realize that it's available. And it has, it's proven very effective in certain situations. So our total calls per month is, our total calls, total call volume was 182,395 for telephone calls, and that averages out to 182 911 calls a day, 316 non-emergency calls for admin lines a day, and about right at 500 average calls per day over the telephone. And on the last page is just a breakdown of our total call volume. We processed 298,476 dispatch and telephone calls 2016. So we almost broke 300,000 mark. We've done that once before, and we're coming close to it again. I mentioned earlier about quality assurance, I wanted to brag a little bit about our quality assurance program. We have a minimum of 80% that you have to score, and we do this by individual and by shifts. If it falls below 80%, then we start looking at if there's a policy, actually if it falls below 90% on some calls, we start looking if there's a policy problem or a training problem, and then if there's a performance issue. So our Q &amp; A scores for the agency for January, and this is across the board, shift one was 93.6 on call taking, 97.9 on law, and 97% on fire. Ship two was 96.5% on call taking, 98.6% on law, and 97.1% on fire. Ship three was 98.3% on call taking, 98.1% on law, and 99.1% on fire. And then ship four was 96.4% on call taking, 99.1% on law enforcement dispatch, and 99.2% on fire department dispatch. That was in January. And our February scores are actually a little bit higher than that in most of our areas. That's, that's something to be proud of. So we meet that national standard. We exceed the national standard. And it takes a lot of work on our book to do that. The only other thing that I wanted to discuss, and I'll be done. Senate Bill 222, which we have worked on diligently over the past three years, was supposed to have come out of Rules Committee yesterday and went to the Senate to the House for a vote. Unfortunately, it got held up. This bill changes 911 in Georgia in a very good, a very good way. It increases the income to the counties, to any one of the 911 centers. And it gives us an authority at the state level made up of local government representatives, not the state government representatives, that help guide 911 and bring in next generation through the state, next-gen 911. And this is something that I've worked on for the last three years. We've never been this close before. We anticipate now it going to the House for a vote on Thursday, just once it clears the Rules Committee. But we thought it was going to be voted on this afternoon, but there was a little pickup from our Rules Committee. But I wanted to give everybody an update where that is. We hope that it moves forward. It'll be a really good thing for Paulding County. It'll be a good thing for 911 throughout the state. You have any questions? I'll be more than happy to try and answer those.
Good report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's a pleasure to have Major Leanne LaHone with the Marshal Bureau provide her updates. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. I'm quick, it's just four spots. Basically, what I'm coming for today is just to give you a heads-up, since we took away the checkpoint downstairs, to give you an update of what we've done in our timeframe. So what I did was, the checkpoint went away February 11th of 2017, and took us all way into it yesterday for stats. And I took the same timeframe from last year. So February 11th last year to March 27th last year. So that's six weeks. Here are some of our numbers. The written reports, the six weeks last year was 394, and this year is 883. So by having that second shift on, that is what makes the difference in all those calls. The next one, I'm sitting here looking at, realizing I should not have abbreviated it that way. It's actually going to be follow-up calls. So what, 225 this year, 643. You can see the rest for yourself. The big one that I thought you guys would be most impressed with are illegal dumpings. We went from 15 in six weeks last year to 131. And one of the things that's impressive about that, that I have to give huge kudos to my guys for doing, illegal dumpings are a little bit difficult. It's not, you just go out and you say, hey, this guy lives here, this is his garbage. No, you have to actually figure out who dumped that garbage. So sometimes those cases take a long time to do. So that's a great number for them to have done that. The trash complaints, those are ones that are on someone's property. And that is also the difference between a magistrate citation and a state citation. So if we go to someone's house, that's a trash complaint on a property, which is a magistrate. Uncovered loads was also another big one. I know Tommy Leonard would be very excited to see that number go up some. Those are the ones where we got a lot of trash on the side of the road that's coming off of the trucks or trailers. Our arrests, you can see the huge difference from just having more folks on the road. Last year, we had none during that time frame. This year, we had quite a few. We had some illegal dumpings. One was actually a felony, where it was dumping of commercial chemicals. Two were actually from some folks dumping on county property. So it was pretty convenient. We've had some other things that were, the traffic offense one ended up being pulled over for unsecured load, but they ended up not having a driver's license, and so they were arrested on that. Other jurisdictions, that stuff, like if somebody had a warrant or we got behind them, theft of water, anytime they have a case where someone's stealing water, we'll help them out and take the warrants on that. Possession, again, that was just, they pulled somebody over for traffic offense. One of the other things that we have been working on, DOT had some county property they needed monitored, they had some stuff going on. We did seven zone patrols in that area. We ended up coming out of there with three legal dumpings, two destruction of public property, where they were tearing up the right-of-way, and several criminal trespass warnings to keep people from out of that property. And the last thing, one of our big cases, for two months, we've been working on a case that had 35 junk vehicles at a location. And because we had that extra time and extra stacking out, we were able to hurry up and put a little bit more pressure, and now we're down to one vehicle. So it's helped tremendously. I'm super proud of my staff. They've done a great job, and we look forward to having a lot more. Anybody have any questions?
My question is, wow.
They've done great. I can't take credit for anything. They've really worked hard.
Great for your show.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Nancy Hollingshed, who has recently been elected as the Paulding County Republican Party Chairman. So Nancy, I want to embarrass you. It's my day to embarrass people. Thank you for being here. Under consent agenda, discuss action on five consent agenda items. I'll read them. Number one, Paulding County Sheriff's Office would like to request the commissioners to retire Deputy William Payne and Detective Lewis Guy's service weapons for their 22-plus years of law enforcement service in Paulding County. Number one, Glock Model 21 SF, serial number TYN873, and Glock Model 21 SF, serial number Agenda item number two, authorize the chairman to enter into a lease agreement with Tower Con to provide lease space for a cell tower at 21 Old Burn Hill Green Road, to the fire station site at the intersection. And number three, adopt revised job description for the executive assistant and county clerk to the board of commissioners. And number four, adopt job description for the board of commissioners, senior administrative assistant to the chairman. Number five, authorize the chairman to sign the transmittal letter submitting the Paulding County Joint Comprehensive Plan to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission for review. Would any of our commissioners like to place any of these five consent agenda items to the business, regular business? Hearing none, we will move ahead to whole business. We have none. And new business, the first item on the list is our scheduled public hearing on the Paulding County Comprehensive Plan. And Ms. Ann Lippman and Mr. Chris Robinson are going to give us the initial comments on it, and they've worked very hard for a long period of time. So glad to have y'all make the opening remarks.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioner, and Skipper. Thank you for letting me come before you today. We are at the beginning of the end of our final comprehensive plan process. We recall that the February 28th Plan Commission had our other leasing presentation from some of our consultants. And today, I'm going to keep it brief so we can get on to the public hearing and hear what the public has to say. The draft plan, it's comprised of three books, has been available on our website for about a week, and we've had a hard copy for a little over a week. And I just want to go over what the process is. Comprehensive plan is required by the state of Georgia of all jurisdictions in Paulding County and its cities, opted to do it together again as a collaborative process. We have some required elements that we have to do. That's community goals, needs and opportunities, a community work program, and a land use element, that is, if you have zoning, which we do, and as a member of the Atlanta Regional Commission for Transportation purposes, we are required to do a transportation element, which Scott thankfully took care of for us a few years ago. We added some optional elements. We added the economic development element, and as well as some others such as natural resources, public facilities, and target areas. The process, we had our first required public hearing on October 27th, 2015. The plan process requires community participation. And we've had four community workshops, three stakeholder meetings, and we've had lots of information that we put out on Facebook. This is the, once the draft is complete, we're required to have a second public hearing, which will be next. And once that is done, and the transmittal letter submitted, we will be submitting the plan to Northwest Georgia Regional Commission for them to begin their review process to make sure that it's in compliance with state rules. Once that is done, if we get compact comments back from Northwest Georgia or the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, those will be incorporated into the plan, and it needs to be adopted by June 30th. So in that interim, if there are any comments by the public or any commissioners, we do have some time to incorporate those comments. And that is my overview. We hope to have the plan adopted by the deadline, which is June 30th, 2017. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Seeing no questions, thank you so much, Ms. Lippman, that introduction, the opening remarks. I would now like to call the public hearing, or open the public hearing for public participation. If you would come forward to the podium, if you'd like to speak and sign in, and we'll appreciate your remarks.
I'm a resident of Paulding County and a homeowner, graduate of South Paulding High School, Lucas Newborn. Probably the first thing was answered, my first question, was how long has the public had to actually look this document over? How long has there been a copy available? And I've heard a week. I'm actually looking at the document, I believe, on her desk. It's over 1,300 pages, if I'm not mistaken, the total comprehensive plan. So I'm curious to know how our residents are supposed to have time in six days to read through 1,300 pages of documents? That's a question I'm posing to the commissioners. How we, as the public, are supposed to read over 1,300 pages, which I'm looking at this giant stack on her desk, is the plan. That's the first issue I have with how this is being run, is that we have not had the proper time as the citizens of this county to look over the next 10 years of where we're supposed to be going. I am 25 years old, a proud business owner of two LLCs here in the state of Georgia. It is very difficult for me to see our county looking at progress and looking at the ability to move forward with multi-use developments such as storefronts on the bottom of developments in other counties we see, such as Cobb County, Buette County. These are issues for me, having office spaces. I am an online business owner. That would mean a lot to me. And I'm not even sure if this allotment or consideration has been put forward in this plan, because again, it's 1,300 pages. The other issue I have is that although there have been public hearings, the input from what I see in the documentation, which it was very hard to find this document on the Paulding County website, which I also take grievance with, is that there hasn't been a lot of info from the citizens of Paulding County. And there have been a lot of people making judgments on this document that are not from Paulding County. I also, going through the document, I forgive me, I want to made it through, glancing through it, reading through parts that especially interest me, is that there have been several instances where there are parts of the document that make reference to Florida and not Paulding County. In the published document, they reference Florida. So I'd like to know why it's referencing Florida and not Paulding County, Georgia. This document is not ready, I don't believe, to go under inspection. It's not ready to move forward. I would respectfully ask on behalf of the citizens of Paulding County to give the citizens time to look this document over. It is 10 years. People such as myself have to start deciding, do we stay in Paulding County and perhaps open up our indoors? Do we engage with our government? Or do we move to a county that's ready to move forward and ready to progress, ready to bring jobs? The fact that 75% of my citizens drive out of this county for work, and we have six days to read through the next 10-year plan, that's troubling to me as a young man and as a graduate of Paulding County High School Systems. And as a citizen, it is troubling to me that this seems to be being pushed through very quickly. I also would recommend and ask if we would consider having another public hearing at a later date to give us all adequate time to possibly correct taking Florida out of the document, and actively pursue a progressive movement towards engaging builders, business owners from across the state, and bring them here to Paulding County. And it would be greatly appreciated, again, if we could have adequate time to do that. Thank you.
How much time would you suggest we allow for this?
My biggest concern is that with 1,300 pages, I would say a minimum a month, because not only are we as citizens picking up kids from daycare and taking our kids to school, we have jobs, we have businesses to run. We need adequate time to look through this. For me personally, I would say probably about a month. But for someone else that has, I'm a single young man, I have a little bit of time to look through these things. But for a mom, a single mom working, there are people such as that who are concerned about these issues. And a lot of times, they've come to me and other community leaders to say, is this true? That we're trying to push through this document, if it says for, if it makes references to projects in Florida? And I apologize for not having that reference with you. I'll be happy to bring that to your attention and email those concerns and highlight where it references Florida within that document. But I, for me personally, I'd recommend at least a minimum of a month to reach through.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting me come in. Lucas, I don't know you, but I feel like kissing you right now to say what you did. I started looking over this, and most of you know I'm a retired educator. And one of the things I do in my retirement is I do a lot of reading. I have read numerous, numerous papers by students, doctoral papers that I've been turning in on doctoral programs, graduate work, I've even taught classes. And one of the things I have always done is read. And I like, I'm a nerd, I guess, and I enjoy looking at graphs and making sure that when anybody's presenting in a paper matches things. And I was almost appalled at this. Now, I picked the first one because this is what interests me, is economic development. And then I found out that it doesn't even have to be in the plan. Is that correct? It is optional. So we paid money to have this written. And I'm sorry, if I were a teacher now grading this, it would go in the garbage can with an F minus. It's terrible. Just on the very first line, you, there are things, and I'm going to go through everything that I've got, Mark, but the very first line of the document has a reference to the Southeast Economic Development Council. That doesn't even exist. It's not, it's not, it's not even what this is about, introduction. According to the Southeast Economic Development Council. And I looked it up on the internet, it doesn't exist. There are a number of acronyms that are in this paper and in this document that, the acronyms are in the document, but it's not referenced to what it is till later on in the paper. So if you're reading it, you don't know what you're talking about, because it's just an acronym. A lot of the graphs are not matching what's in the document. For example, on page nine, I don't know if you've got your documents in front of you, it talks about the components of the plan, our analysis, vision, action plan, and evaluation. it talks about the components of the plan, our analysis, vision, action plan, and evaluation. And there is no vision in this whatsoever. There's no vision. It starts with a pyramid, starts with what we want, but it does not show anywhere in this document what the vision for this actual document is or for the county. You go on, and on page eleven, there's, you're talking about counties, and you're showing, it says it is thirty-three miles from downtown Atlanta. It's not, it's closer than that. It says thirty-eight miles from Hartsville, Atlanta Airport, thirty miles. The county, there's a twenty-nine counties in the area that we're a part of. On bottom of page eleven, it references twenty-eight counties. And then on another page, it says thirty-three. Page twelve, the graph doesn't match the number. It's talking about the estimate of population estimate, was one fifty-two to one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight. And then the number in the graph is one hundred and forty-two, three hundred and twenty-four. It goes on and on and on. And the page that he is talking about, it is a whole document, that is the page and the next page of it, was actually, when I started looking at it, I thought, where is Valencia College? And I looked it up, and it's in Florida. And it's talking, the whole document is about Kissimmee, Florida. So where is our individuality? We're not getting it in this document. There are other places, if you go, references that are just not matching, graphs are not matching. It's just, it goes on and on and on. The map is talking about our Sault Ste. Trail, about, it references, there's three trailheads, we actually have four. It's, it's, have you read it? Have you actually read this? Who has read it? You're presenting it to us today. You guys have had it since December. Right? When did you receive it? Did you receive it Wednesday? I don't think so. You've had it before then. And I am, you know, I'm just mortified that we don't want to put this out. Now, I know it's optional, but you paid, what, seventy-something thousand dollars to have this done? And now we've got four of the components that I haven't even read yet. That's all I've got to say.
I actually want to address my concerns with the Strategic Economic Development Plan. You know, one of my big things is looking transparent government as well as my looking for being good stewards of my taxpayer money. And for seventy-seven thousand dollars, I had some, I was hopeful that this document might provide some much-needed guidance and direction for economic development, considering the county appears to be turning around at this point. And after reviewing this document, I am utterly appalled also. It's nothing more than a poor copy and paste job, among other things. And I'm not even going to really get into any of the factual inaccuracies, opinions, political statements, and unsubstantiated facts and claims in this document. Like Carol said, the opening sentence in this document states, according to the Southeast Economic Development Council, economic development is. And if you look at, the company who prepared this document, the Strategic Planning Group, and you look at their Ormond Beach document, the Ormond Beach document says the Florida Economic Development Council, so they just changed it. So basically, if somebody pulled the document up and did a Google search, they're not going to, you know, find that document. But the first couple of pages, it does come directly from that company's Ormond Beach document. Pages thirty-six through forty-four of Polton County document talks about the Silver Comet Field, and those pages come directly from the Kissimmee Gateway Economic Development Plan. And I would like to read you an excerpt from our document. One tenant, Ranger Jet Center, leases land from the airport and is currently undeveloped and could partner to develop that property, Valencia College. So they didn't even do a very good copy and paste job. And it goes on. Another section of the document, the demographic section concerning Polton County from roughly pages ten through thirty-six, consists of county-level free demographic data that is available from various government websites. Having worked in market research and in corporate development departments in the past, I'm really disappointed to see the data for our county presented at such a high level. And it also lacks any kind of analysis. What had been meaningful was for the demographic data to be broken down much further, such as a census block level, since this could have uncovered differences in HCO scores, incomes, educational attainment levels, and occupations, which were all very important to site selectors, commercial, residential, and retail developers. Most importantly, this would have helped to identify pockets of opportunity, especially when such things as the consumer lifecycle is factored in. For example, the median income, I mean, excuse me, median age in Polton County is in the mid-thirties, and the median home price is well under two-hundred thousand dollars in Polton County. Looking at the consumer lifecycle, which is just looking at the predictable behavior and spending habits at different ages, a large segment of our population is residing in starting starter homes. And according to the consumer lifecycle, these mid-thirty-somethings are going to be looking to move up to larger homes in the next couple of years as their teenagers get up to be very annoying. And the question is, do they want to stay here? Is the housing stock here for them to move up to? And who's going to buy their houses for seventy-seven thousand dollars? I would like to have seen some meaningful facts and data and analysis. And according to some of the work sessions, this was supposed to be what was in this document, and it was presented as, when they presented this new model. Pages forty-five to forty-eight discusses industry sectors in the Atlanta area. And excerpts from this portion of the document are taken directly from this company's John Creek report. Again, no real insight, analysis, or anything concerning improving economic development in Polton County. Pages sixty-four to sixty-seven included an excerpt on public-private economic development organizations, taken directly from a managing economic development organization manual. So again, just another copy and paste job from existing plans that they have done in the past. The most troubling part of this document for me is the section where it recommends increasing the PCD budget to five-hundred thousand dollars. My problem with this, again, goes back to value, my tax dollars that I'm giving you. And when I see basic administrative tasks being left undone by PCD, such as their website, which has old information on it, and a director that has reputation for not answering phone calls, I have to ask, what else is not being taken care of properly? And you don't deserve any of my money until you can get your house in order. Let's see, one of the things that their website does not have is that it includes Board of Directors from 2013 to 14. The meeting section has not been updated since mid-2016. And the investor section reflects 2013 to 2014 data. It's a problem. You're not going to get any more of my money until you can assure me that you can take care of the basic housing task. Additionally, this document calls for the IDA, the Airport Authority, to be subordinate to the PCD. And this is nothing more than a paragraph. Mr. Collet, you have been overheard stating that your goal was to nuke the IDA. Mr. Reynolds is recorded as stating in the minutes of a comprehensive planning work session meeting that he was going to be the director of the chamber. For those of us that have been following what has been going on in this county for the past few years, this recommendation is absolutely absurd. And all it would do is to turn this whole county's future over to a small group of anti-growth people, including some of you that are on this board. The overview of goals from page seventy and on include many great in theory, generic goals and objectives that are, again, recommended to various other entities that they had done plans for. And all of these items listed require much time, much effort, much manpower and money, as well as the political and social cohesion to successfully develop and implement them. And without that, this is just a seventy-seven thousand dollar plan that is destined to collect dust on a shelf somewhere, just like some of the other plans that have been done in Polton County in the past. And since this is an optional document, is not required as part of the comprehensive plan, I am requesting that this document not be included in the submission to the state. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joel Larkin, and I'm an attorney in Marietta with the firm Sam's Larkin, Houghton Valley. I'm also a landowner and resident of Polton County. I'm here today on my own behalf, but primarily on behalf of the Aiken family and a business that they formed and owns about a forty-acre tract of property immediately across from a hospital at the intersection of Highway 278 and Vilcaruth. I've talked to some of you before about this. We've been monitoring this plan for about six months now, since the city of Hyrum had it on their agenda last September. And we've been very interested in what the plan has to say. And unlike a lot of the folks that are here today, I'm not so much concerned by the specifics of the plan, although there are a great many things about the plan that are troublesome. I'm more concerned about the generalities of the plan and the impact that those generalities have on development in Polton County. Specifically, there's much discussion in this plan about a proposed overlay in and around the hospital. And there's various statements in the plan that talk about preserving and protecting existing inventory of undeveloped properties, and suggesting that some type of overlay be put in place. That caused some discussion of a moratorium back in September. And as you all know, Polton County's gone to a real rough patch since the great recession. And commercial development has been hard to gin up recently. The Aiken family's finally getting some interest in their property after having invested millions and millions of dollars in preparing it. And now we're getting developers talking to us about their concerns about what this document means and what impact it might have on their plans. They're spending money in due diligence and looking at this property, and at the same time, they need to be concerned that somehow that the county is going to put in place additional restrictions to preserve and protect this hospital overlay. And I would submit to you that no one's really studied the need for this overlay. I would submit that there is no need. There's plenty of property available and has been available for many, many years. And if there was really a demand for these hospital-type uses, they'd be under construction now. But regardless of that, as it relates to this specific property at the corner, we've got a different theme in the plan that talks about promoting commercial development at crossroads, and it knows. And the plan is giving two inconsistent messages. Are we going to preserve this property for medical development? Or are we going to promote good commercial development? And that's something we're having to explain to potential developers. There's references in the plan to this overlay, but there's no understanding or perception about what it means. In the strategic plan, they make reference to a supposed overlay that exists in the city of Marietta around Kenstone Hospital. They've been talking about an overlay for many years, and there is a draft, but it has no relationship to this particular situation in this area. That's a redevelopment area around the hospital, and they can't come to agreement on that. And rather than promoting development, it creates a bunch of restrictions on development. So what we're asking from you folks, we'd like to see much of this discussion about the medical overlay deleted, removed from the plan, because it's creating a negative situation for the county. It's not good for my clients, it's not good for their property, and it's not good for the county. We don't disagree that there is some beneficial interest that's created from having the hospital there, and hopefully it will bring some good jobs. The hospital's got plenty of property, and they would like to see, I think, a lot of that development on their property. But that development is going to come in regardless. There's plenty of land available. The zonings that exist along Vilcaruth and along 278 allow that type of development now. So if we're going to discuss this proposed overlay and this opportunity, it should be discussed in a positive way, where it talks about creating opportunities or creating additional incentives for development. For example, in some areas where you have overlays, rather than creating additional restrictions, you identify areas where you relax restrictions, where you create additional ways that you can develop rather than minimize it. Then more generally, there's different areas in this plan where they talk about zoning, and we get more of the cookie cutter stuff. Even on the overlay, this plan talks about pedestrian-friendly development with clear walkable connections. I don't know if they looked at a map, but we're talking about the property they identifies on two sides with major highways. I don't know how anybody's going to walk from anywhere to anything. And when we're talking about medical uses, typically, they're not walking anywhere, they're wheelchair, and they want to park close. And you go down the list, they talk about putting parking lots behind the buildings rather than in front. This plan is the kind of development you'd see in some downtown area in close proximity. It's not the discussion that I would expect in a more suburban area like we're talking about, more rural. And we've got wide-open areas to develop, and that's a great opportunity. But this plan doesn't, it doesn't seem to relate to what we're really developing ground. And they've mentioned a lot of ways, but as it relates to zoning, I think that's the case. So I know you're in a predicament, you need to have a plan approved to qualify for grants. But I would suggest that maybe the way to do it is to get more input on these larger issues, and maybe just delete large portions of this plan that aren't necessary, thin it out, so that you have what you need in order to move forward. And then create some additional opportunity for all these interested people, like me and my clients and these other folks, to meet with folks at the county and explore these real issues. They're going to exist with or without the plan. There are opportunities for the county and for the population. And if you've got our interest, let's take advantage of it. Let's do something. Thank you.
Any additional speakers?
I'm sent to speak later, but I want to speak on this office. Been a general contractor in this county since 1986. The gentleman told you a lot of right stuff. We have an overlay in place now that if you wanted to bring the Aquatic Center from downtown Atlanta and put it in Polton County, you couldn't do it. Your overlay would restrict it. Have any of you seen the new library in Vellarica? You couldn't put that in Polton County. Your overlay is so restricted today, you couldn't build it here. You have an overlay already in place that's restricting this county in a lot of ways. You need to consider relaxing these restrictions to do things. I'm a metal building builder. I built things like the senior citizen center. Front of it looks nice. Built churches in this county. Metal buildings shouldn't be outlawed. There are ways to make them look as good as anything on the streets, but yet your rules are written up. are written up outlawing metal. You've got a contractor sitting in the room back here that years ago, I was the only person at a public hearing when you outlawed EFS on the face of buildings in this county. EFS, you got it on the buildings out front of the courthouse out here, but yet in your overlay, it's outlawed. You need to relax a lot of the rules you've got. And from what these people tell me, I might need to get these 1,300 pages and get a bedside lamp and do some reading, because this has serious complications to your county. Thank you.
Additional citizens wishing to speak during the public hearing?
Can I clarify a little bit about what Frank said? Those of you that don't know, we are an EFS contractor. EFS stands for Exterior -- I'm getting the wrong.
Can you sign with it?
Yes. EFS stands for Exterior Installation and Finish System, which is what we do. That's our trade, and we've been in business 27 years right here in Paulding County. We do very little work in Paulding County. So our buildings, those of you who know where my office is on 278, extend the Dallas City Limits, are metal buildings with EFS covering them. We have a church in the front and our office is in the back. And I think they're pretty good-looking buildings. So just to clarify what EFS stands for, it is a synthetic stucco system, and it's used in residential, it's used in churches, it's used in commercial, a lot of commercial applications. So, thank you.
My name is Nancy Hollins. I'm up in North Paulding. I have been talking to several brokers and stuff in this county, and we do need to get this right, because they are now searching nationwide to get investors and people to come to Paulding County to bring money and develop in Paulding, because it helps them for one thing, but it helps Paulding County. So we do need to definitely need to get this right, so that as they're out there trying to bring investors into this county, it looks like we're ready for them. So that's all I'm saying.
Any further comments? Well, I would certainly like to thank all the participants, all the speakers, for your thoughts, for your evaluations, your concerns that have been expressed here. I would just ask one more time, Ms. Lippman or Mr. Robinson would like to make any final
I just wanted to review that what -- there are three books that comprise the plan. It is over 1,300 pages, and I just sort of wanted to go over what each one of those books contains. Book one is the executive summary. It's the plan. It's less than 200 pages. It is the summary of all the studies that were done, the public participation. It includes the community goals that were identified, the needs and opportunities, the work program. Book two is the supplemental studies. We contracted with the Georgia Conservancy to do a land use study. Scott, who did your transportation study? The CTP, which is probably over 300 pages itself, with the entire document that goes through Jacobs. Jacobs did the comprehensive transportation plan and the economic development study that was conducted by a firm that is out of Florida. And I will certainly go over that. I've read it several times, but I will go through it again and double-check for any accurate references. The third book, which is what is the big book, it contains the report of accomplishments, which is a requirement through the state law. We had a work program in the last plan, so for the county and each of the cities, there's a report of accomplishments showing what we did in the past 10 years. The bulk of book three is all the notes from the meetings with the cities, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, economic development. We've been meeting for two years, and information from all those meetings and what we worked on is in there, as is all the information about the stakeholder meetings, every presentation that was done. There were presentations done at two Georgia Power lunches. Chris and I made a presentation to the Board of Realtors, we spoke at two Rotary Clubs. We also had an art contest, and there's lots of information about the art contest in there. The book three is the -- I mean, it's just every sign-in sheet, every news article, everything that was done to get this plan out to the public. And the Georgia Conservancy by no means did not address the rural and conservation areas of our county. That is definitely a big part of the plan. Over 40,000 acres of this county are protected green space, and they definitely address that that needs to be taken care of in our zoning ordinance. And I'll be the first to admit that the zoning ordinance needs to be completely looked at, and that is definitely one of the recommendations in the study. So I just wanted to give a little information about what is comprised of that 1,342 pages, and if any of y'all have any questions, as far as both, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Basically, it has a lot of information from everything y'all have done the last two years.
Yes.
It's kind of grown in to say, hey, this is what we did, this is what we did, and so forth. And this is a public hearing. Again, for more input, we've had how many public hearings?
This is our third one.
Whether the comments are good, bad, or indifferent, I welcome the comments. And that's what it should be. But the information on the 1,300 pages is a lot of information that's just been gathered at meetings, whether they were here, whether they were in planning zoning, whether they were at libraries. I forget how many libraries did you have meetings at?
We had two. We had four public meetings, one at the Dallas Civic Center, one at the Harmonon Center, New Georgia Library, and Project Plant Run.
So it's been something you've worked on, but what you didn't do, you made sure you threw all that in there.
Yes.
So it was all just, it was all there, and hey, this is what we discussed, this is what we've looked at from this, wherever it was. So I welcome very much the comments, whether you agree and disagree or whatever. That's what the public hearing is for. And it's a plan that has been worked on, like you said, for two years. And we've allowed you and those folks to work on that. That's been your all's project to be able to do. I will, because Mr. Larkin brought up something, you and I have met before, and I believe there's certain processes that you go through, in my personal view. Doesn't mean that's right or wrong. I'm not one that says that government should tell you what to do with your property. I'm the one that I feel like when it comes to a planning and zoning meeting, that you let the process happen. I believe most of these commissioners up here, if not all of them, will say, this is my seventh year in office, and when something comes before planning and zoning, and you hear everybody jump on board, and I don't like this, I don't like that, they're for it, against it, or whatever, I always say, Mr. Collette, let the process happen. I say, let the process happen, and that's what's supposed to happen in planning and zoning meetings, and let the people be heard. Because a lot of times, what we think's going to happen doesn't happen. A lot of times, the folks that think something's terrible find out that it's not, or the folks that think something's good find out that it's not, whatever that is. I'm not a person that just thinks, well, you should -- you might have some overlays where you do some things, but don't restrict it too much, but at the same time, just to arbitrarily just pick out property and say, hey, we're saving this for this, or we're saving that for that. Somebody wants to save property for something, go buy and save it. That's bottom line. Don't go buy and save it if you think it's that much. And so that issue came up in the city of Hyrum about the property down through Bill Caruth, and I think it came up improperly, the way it was done. And it was stopped. In my view, it was improper. I let that be known that night at their meeting, and that's not the way you handle business. So I compare it to Kenstone Hospital, and what a great hospital that is over there. And I compare it to the doctors' offices and things that have grown, and buildings and homes that have been torn down through the years and had other medical facilities there, medical facilities or doctors' offices that are inside old buildings or old houses, and so on, so on, so on. The hospital owns a lot of property over there. Our hospital owns a lot of property right here in Paulding County. Our hospital does. And trust me, if somebody's wanting something medical, that hospital's going to try to get that right there where everybody can be in that same campus, and everybody can do the walking, that we want to talk about walking, and so on, so on. So I've said before, things have to come before planning and zoning. You've got to let the process happen and let that planning and zoning board do whatever it is they do. And at the end of the day, the buck may stop at the board of commissioners meeting, but I'm not for telling somebody, you can only do this with your property, period, cut and dry. And if somebody wants to tell somebody that's all you can do with your property, then go buy it and own it, and you can do it, if that's what you want to do. So I just wanted to put that out, because that's been a hot topic item that we've discussed for quite a while, since the city of Hyrum debacle. And that's still where I stand. And as far as this, I appreciate another public hearing for input, no matter what your input is, I appreciate it. No matter who gives the input, I appreciate it. And that's what a public hearing is for. We've given you and your department, Chris Robinson, the authority to do what you need to do for this process. And so we've got a few more things to do, and that's what this is about. So thank you for your work, and thank you all for your input. We will continue to move forward.
So we have accomplished the purpose of the public hearing, to hear from you. I would like to suggest, after conferring with Ms. Skipper, that if you recall, the fifth consent agenda item reads, authorize the chairman to sign a transmittal letter submitting the Paulding County Joint Comprehensive Plan to the Northwest Regional Commission for review. I would like to suggest that we move that consent agenda item to new business so that we can make additional comments here in new business, and discuss a timetable, and come up with a solution here as we move forward in getting the final smooth comprehensive plan agreeable and tweaked in any way that we need to do that. So it doesn't have to be a motion.
It doesn't have to be a motion. The county commissioner asked for an agenda item to move from a consent agenda to a reverberant.
While we're on that subject, if you don't mind, Mr. Karen, I would like to move numbers three and four off the consent agenda. And there's only several, a couple other issues there I'd like to talk about maybe later today. Thank you. Get your input.
Okay, so we'll move items three, four, and five off the consent agenda to new business. And at this time, one more chance for anyone to like to speak on the comprehensive plan.
I need to sign it again. Mr. Ponnell, you actually are my county commissioner. I live in your district off of Bridge Road. I'm very excited about the roundabout, by the way. I'm hopeful that comes through. I don't know if y'all have decided on a name yet. You're combining the Collette Ponnell reference. I was in a VOC meeting. But it is the job of the county. It is the job to decide where we give development so that we have access to less traffic. It is the job of the county committee to decide where our county moves and where it moves forward. And if this is the kind of plan that Paulding County puts into effect, referencing Florida up, and most of you haven't read it, maybe we need to start thinking about who's sitting on the county commission. Maybe there should be other people running for positions that care about moving Paulding County forward. But respectfully, I agree with you. As a homeowner, as a business owner, we do have to find that line where people can develop and not develop. But not everyone can go out and buy millions of dollars of tracts of land. These everyday people, they don't get to decide that. It's your job, your job, to grow this county, to provide jobs in this county, to provide roundabouts, to update our votes, to open up new forms of travel and commerce. In the city of Hyrum, if we had some access roads thought about way back when, we might not have as much traffic as we do. I'm all about taking plans and not reinventing the wheel, absolutely. It doesn't bother me that there might be a similar community like ours, but to not actually look at the needs of this county and these citizens, myself and yourselves included, is very troubling. So I will respectfully disagree. And agree that we can't tell people what to do with their land, but absolutely, we can properly zone. And I personally feel like that might be some part issues of what we have in this county is that we are not looking at progressing and actual solutions. We just want to lawsuit each other to death and vipper. And for people such as myself, I am looking to purchase that home, that situation, I am looking. And I'm happy to look at Cobb County and Brookhaven, because Paulding County doesn't want to offer people my age input or ideas for to provide access to areas and business opportunities that we need to grow. And respectfully, Mr. Collette, you recently released a video, two and a half minute video, referencing that we don't need so much for our kids to go to college, we need to provide for them proper channels to go through and receive vocational training. And I agree with you on that to a degree.
It's not exactly what I said. I said, all kids, college is not for all kids. There are kids who are not going to go to college, and we need to be there for those kids.
Absolutely. I did attend college myself. Actually, it was way too expensive. But I did successfully run a brick-and-mortar business in Hyrum for a year, before moving to Savannah for a year. But this is the mentality, that we don't need college.
That's not my mentality.
Well, respectfully, it did come across a way in the video, sir. But, and again, I agree with you. Those channels should be open to all citizens. If you don't think that you want to go to college, we should have that. But the way that that video presented is that college ain't for everyone, but it should be the first option. A higher education for a plumber is just as good for higher education for a doctor. We want smart citizens. We want citizens to be able to shop, and we want citizens to be able to go out and to be a part of our county, especially for young people. If there is not development, we don't look at this county. And as someone who has lived here, and then also lived in Temple, Georgia, I'm familiar with West Georgia. So these are valid concerns, and I appreciate, Mr. Promet, your motion to take these agenda items off and first look at this. But please do know that it is your job to take care of this county and to zone it properly so that the transportation or traffic issues are looked at. That is your job. And I just had to say that. And I do mean that with respect, and I appreciate your job to do, but it is your job.
You said you did not go to college?
I did not attend college.
You're a very, very strong intelligent guy, Lee. College is not for everybody. We should push everybody that way. I do stand by that. College is there for those who need college, but there's a lot of people who need to go to college or making more money than people who college degree.
Yes, sir, and I'm one of those.
The two of you that did not have years ago said, everybody needs to go to college.
Well, and I will disagree with you.
How college great?
Well, and my biggest thing is, and you referenced the expense of college. So let's talk about the expense, and maybe we can work on that. And people, I just, I strongly believe that you're talking about people going and having access and providing for them to get a vocational. Let's have them have access to college. Let's talk about building colleges here in Paulding. Paulding has so much opportunity with our airport. The thought of having people come into our county and experience the beautiful nature that we have in Paulding. Absolutely, there should be areas of pristine wildlife. I'm very appreciative to our law enforcement for catching all the illegal dumping, because not only is that bad for the county and its citizens-- not only is that bad for the county and its citizens' health requirement, but I do think that to keep people here in Paulding, we do need to seriously consider economic growth. Please know it is your job. Thank you.
Sue Hawkins, I would like someone to explain exactly why this plan was done, what's the bottom line, and how closely does the adopted plan have to be adhered to. And before I step away, I want to thank all of you for doing all the work that you do. I know how crazy busy you are. Granted, everything needs to be addressed. I also realize you have very competent people here to handle a lot of the workload. And I, you know, I'm not going to sit here and try to alibi and excuse you for not having looked at this, but I also can understand and appreciate why you may not have. I so appreciate the due diligence that, or should I say the diligence, that some of you have shown here today in picking this draft apart. I only wish there wasn't ounce of that applied to the airport's environment, draft environmental system. Thank you. Here. Oh, you're wrong.
Just letting you discuss the requirement in the timetable previously. Now, just looking at the light review of what the requirements are and what it does for us.
Understanding the question correctly is sort of what is the purpose of the comprehensive plan and what if you adopt the plan? As I mentioned when I explained what the plan is composed of in the beginning of Book Three is a report of accomplishments. Ten years ago, there were activities that were identified that is something that we need to do in the next 10 years to make Paulding County better. I actually don't have Book Three with me, so I don't have the list of report of accomplishments. Can you think of any?
Was this? It was included things like intersection improvements and new schools being built and implementation of a zoning change for things like that. It was specific and general comments to the recommended by the 2007 plan that was put in a five-year work program, the longer the short-term work program then. That was to address, you know, what was required by the state under the planning act. And so every 10 years, you have to do that.
Is it to get funding? Is it to acquire funding?
Under the Georgia Planning Act and Department Committee of Affairs rules, we had to have a adopted local comprehensive plan and that would keep us qualified in the eyes of the state of Georgia for state funding. And to give you an example, it was chief of environmental authority, office of identity, any other kind of state funds.
And how closely does the plan have to be adhered to?
It can be amended at any time. It's a gap. It's a, "Hey, we took a lot of citizen input and we got more today and we appreciate it." It's a gap. It can be changed at all times. It's not, it may not be perfect, it may need to change. It's like any documented government, a zoning board is changing. I agree. We need to do something with it. But it is a gap. It's not set in stone. I mean, it's something that can change. These ideas will be forward. There's a lot of things drawn up. It's just what the public wants. Do they want to protect this property from a certain type of development? Well, then, it's not necessarily the plan saying how detailed that's going to be. That's a whole nother process. You take it before the people out there and you're going to make a change in a zoning board. This is a gap. It's to keep us qualified for the state, there's a lot of input went into it. It's a draft. It's a draft out there for this public here. There's errors in it. There were some, probably some cussing potty stickers. And that's, that's not an unusual thing, but did the content make sense? Did some of the other recommendations make sense? And so we're going to take this comment seriously. Even if this thing goes into regional review at this time, we still can take this comment and make adjustments. We just want to make sure we get in and stay on track with that file requirement of having it adopted by June 3rd. But just know that it's can be amended at any time.
Would it be possible, and we could talk about this in new business also, just to think about, would it be possible if it goes, if the transmittal letter moves forward and it goes to the Northwest Georgia Regional Council for review, that the people have spoken today together with, those are yours, I think it's three already collected, Julianne and two gentlemen, where we could bring in the ideas that have been presented today, expand it to the Northwest Georgia Regional Council along with us here locally in Paulding County?
I'm going to double check that to make sure. I know that there's going to be changes. The state of Georgia is probably going to ask us to make some changes or ask us some of the same possible questions we have today on, you know, why is this not matching up or such? The idea of today was to try and get this, you know, as much confidence as possible of what we went way over what the state has required for public input. And I think it's coming together as a very good plan. It has a very good planning answer to it. And, you know, there's always things to go back and look in the horizon that can be good out there to help us. So we take it today as a lot of help for us. But I want to check to make sure if it's possible to go on into original review, that we still can make some adjustments. And I think that is possible, but we'll make sure we're going through that.
We can reach out to Northwest Georgia this afternoon and find out what the definitive timetable is to make sure we get a plan approved by June period.
And thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I think we're all grateful that we have citizens that take an interest and would take this time out of whatever you otherwise would be doing, whether it's running a business or a law firm that you would be here. Can't thank you enough. So if there is no one else wishing to speak, I will close the public hearing and we will move to item number two. Unless we have a motion, then we need to take a break. All right. Item number two, discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve an actual cost utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power, Georgia Power Company that is, in the estimated amount of $76,487 for the Brushy Mountain Road paving project. Mr. Green pushed for it.
Thank you. Occasionally, we encounter utilities that have a prior property interest that pre-dates our right-of-way or the operation of our road. And to provide safe clearance, we need to move poles back occasionally. This is one of those situations where we're just going to move some Georgia Power poles. We owe them actual costs made first. There's no profit involved, there's nothing they gain through the company in moving these. We just need to pay them reimbursement for their, any expenses taken here. Appreciate you considering approval.
Any questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you.
And discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $2,000, which will be surplus dollars, for closeout of the Bill Crew Parkway Phase Two project. This is in both post one and post three.
I just need to explain, we are trying to close out the project during the course of work. We do have some increases in the units used. The bids are hard as far as the unit rates, but sometimes we need a little more asphalt or a little bit less of one thing or another. We get towards the end of the job, we reconcile all of that. We don't have a contingency built in to these projects when we bid them. And most of them, you don't hear about because they underrun, but occasionally we do encounter a few overruns overall. And that's what we're asking for is approval for basically the last funding we need to close this project out. It was a pretty large project and we came in with less than 2% overruns. I'm proud of that considering everything we did encounter with utility delays, construction dragged out because of a lot of utility involvement, other things that encountered. We didn't see unsuitable material we had to haul out and then bring in new dirt. We did extend the paving. I don't know if you all are aware of that. The project tied into the Norfolk Southern Bridge, but to eradicate all that temporary striping when we had those lane drops in there for years and shifting traffic back and forth that was just ugly. So we milled and inlaid additional a few hundred feet to tie into the Common Trail Bridge. And I think it gave it an overall seamless finish. I hope you were happy with that and it was money well spent. Do you have any other questions or any questions?
Any questions for Scott?
That'll finish us up.
Yes, sir. That's good. Thank you.
Been communicated to many that some votes need a short break, so we will recess until 10 minutes to 12. At this time, I'll call the work session back to order and we'll see where we left off with new business. Item number four is discuss action to adopt Resolution 17-10, Paulding County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017 through 2022. This reported on by Ms. Skipper and Chief Pelfree.
It's really Chief Pelfree because the resolution itself is the model resolution, so it's not...
All right. I thought you could go off the top.
Are you saying that he's the model?
It's really the same one we've done in previous years, so.
Yeah, it's just the same one we've done. Fable requires us to do one every five years. It's our goals for hazard mitigation for things like natural disasters, your thunderstorms, snowstorms, things like that. And just gets us some goals, objectives to meet. And we went through Luxe Mitigation and Planning Corporation to do this. Katie Westford's here facilitated it. We received a FEMA grant for $50,000 to do this. We matched 25% in kind, but it cost the county anything but our time. Just recommended to adopt this. It's a multi-jurisdictional, so we have to get Hyrum to dial us, rise with a sign off on it as well. And it's just something, it's a working document and we continue to update. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? New business number five, discuss action to approve changes to new south construction contract on the Macklin Road Phase Two Facility Improvements Project and allocate additional funds for contingency, a total of $200,000. Miss Ashmore, and this is in post one.
Our Macklin facility improvements is a multi-phase program. The first phase was the construction of a new water tank. The second phase is construction of a new warehouse and barn. And the final phase will be construction of an office facility replacing the facilities that were at Macklin and used years ago. The Phase Two of the program is what we currently have under construction and it really is, it's the site improvements as well as the construction of the warehouse and barn. I've given you in your package a summary of all the additive and deductive changes that are proposed here, but there are two primary changes. And one is associated with the retaining wall on the eastern edge of the site. The existing wall could not support the loading imposed by a new wall on our property and it didn't have the select backfill material in it. We looked at several options with our design engineer and our construction manager, and the most cost-effective resolution was rotating the wall and deepening the wall to be able to take any load off of the existing retaining wall at the Macklin Township entrance. And that involved also, we didn't have appropriate backfill material on sites. We had to import backfill material for that wall. In addition, the second item of most significance was that we had about 4,900 cubic yards of unsuitable material on the site. And it turns out that a lot of that material was material that was disposed of from repair work done in the system and had to be pulled off-site. It's been disposed of in Phase Five of the county landfill. And actually, I want to recognize it was real cooperative effort to control costs in removing this material. DOT and some of the independent contractors that they have under contract actually hauled the material. Our contractor loaded the trucks. DOT and the independent contractors took it to the landfill and our folks done to spread it at the landfill in order to manage the cost of those changes. The net change orders after the contingency that was included in the contract is $170,873. We're also requesting an additional $29,127 in contingency through the remainder of the project. Any of that contingency that remains unspent at the end of the project is retained by the county. The Water and Sewer Advisory Board did review this at their meeting last week and has made their recommendations for it.
Most of those exciting things you uncovered after, Lori.
Well, I'm going to refer to Daryl on that one.
Broken pipe.
Lots of broken pipe. Yeah, no cars, no bodies. That's always a good thing.
Additional questions, comments?
That's like, thank you for your work with the water sewer. I was very bored like them. They're just consistent, good meetings. Appreciate all the work y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Last month, they made a very timely decision to postpone their trip to the reservoir. They were supposed to do a tour on one of the coldest mornings in March. So we'll be out there with them in April.
Thanks, Lori. Are you going to go into the next one, too? Item number six, discuss action to authorize the chairman execute the consent of easement structures, or two easement structures and associated documents from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers associated with construction of the river intake of the Ritson Creek Reservoir.
All of the documents that were submitted were reviewed as part of the 404 process, but the core actually has a flowage easement along the Edelweiss River on the property for the river intake. And these documents are our consent to, are our agreement to their consent to construct our river intake within their flowage easement. And the second document is then a release and indemnity associated with our structures and their easement.
Questions, comments? Thanks so much. Okay, we'll proceed with the consent agenda items that we brought forward to new business. Item number two, and I'll ask Human Resource Director Brian Acker to come forward also. Item number three is adopt, revise job description for the executive assistant and county clerk to the board of commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning. As you are aware, and this kind of goes hand in hand with the other item, the board commissioners has two positions that are allocated to the board. And basically what we're asking to do is establish the county clerk executive assistant a little more well-defined as the records retention officer, the person responsible for the minutes. All those items make it a little more independent of... All those items make it a little more independent of the existing role that we had and allow the other item for the chairman to have a senior admin assistant that was appointed and serves as pleasure of the chairman as primarily there. Admin support for meetings, setting up the calendar, things of that nature. Any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. That's how we do job descriptions as well.
Comments or questions?
I have a comment. On the assistant that serves, it's your pleasure. I don't have a problem with that to a point, but I think it should still be voted on. And that's just my view on that issue. I don't have a problem with picking somebody, but I think it still needs to be confirmed by the board voting that's the direction that we're going to instead of just the chairman picking somebody in this area.
Any additional comments? The comment I would make is, I think it's typical or customary for administrators, whether in the private sector or the public sector, to identify people that, or select people that they're knowledgeable of their competencies and their background, their credentials. And since if you're going to work day to day, hour to hour with the administrative position, in this case the chairman, then it's a little bit a stretch to me to not be able to make that recommendation because you might not like the person that I would choose.
I think everybody has to go through some sort of an interview process and I understand that you would want to make your pick. Probably 99 times out of 100, I wouldn't have a problem with that pick.
Any additional comments?
I've got a comment on poll point. Six, it says services of liaison between the VOC, constitutional officers, the county department heads. I don't mind having that liaison, but I don't want what has happened in the past where someone's saying you cannot talk to the commissioner without having this in service.
I think you might recall from the previous meeting where we were talking about some of that, I think that's an issue of clarifying that expectation. That's certainly not meant to establish this as supervisory authority to limit the ability of commissioners to approach department heads and vice versa. And I think that's certainly an issue of clarifying that expectation, if any questions in that role.
Here we go.
Any additional comments? Okay, we'll move on to new business item. It's now number seven, which is the consent agenda number five, authorizing the chairman to sign a transmittal letter submitting the Polley County Joint Comprehensive Plan to the Northwest Worth Regional Commission for review. It's been talked about in the public hearing, of course. So I hear the discussion on this item.
I think AM's checking into a couple of things today, and our meeting's not till tonight at 7 o'clock. So hopefully you're going to have some answers back and forth tonight and we can have more discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, I've already reached out to Julian with Georgia Regional Commission. We're going to have a phone conversation Saturday, so we will provide those answers.
I think we need to give consideration to the people, the citizens who've spoken today, and they're all on the list here so that they might be included in our future discussions, around tables, whatever you want to call them. So that with Julian Meadows and any other Department of Community Affairs, people that might like to be involved or might need to be included in guidance on other counties or other situations where we obviously need to stay on track for the deadline in order to be the qualified county that we want to be. But at the same time, you know, the balancing act is allowing our people to get their concerns and objectives and thoughts promoted and considered. So I'm just saying, whatever we do, I mean, I want them to, I want the people to be able to continue to have a voice at some point, to stay on track. We're going to have to be realistic in reaching the final goal.
I have a comment. I love quotes, and one of my favorite quotes is, "When the plan is done, the planning begins." When this plan is adopted, hopefully, hopefully it will be positive before June 30th, 2017. That doesn't mean that Chris and I get to sit back and do nothing. That actually means we start implementing the plan and there will be many more opportunities for public participation in the future.
Additional comments from the board? That's the conclusion of our regular business. There is executive session on litigation. I will entertain a motion that we hear from our citizen wishing to speak on non agenda items before we adjourn for the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion? In a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We're glad to have Mr. Roy Sparks come back up and talk to us on this very important topic for Polley County. Thank you, Roy.
Thank you. It's good to see the process work. I would respectfully ask to add one and a half minutes to my time, please, to finish what I need to say.
I don't have a problem. We're in this thing pretty deep in. Another minute and a half, though.
He just made that motion.
Second.
Second. Rebecca, you got those? All right, so you've got an extra minute and a half. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you. I'll start off by changing my heading from "Good Morning" to "Good Afternoon." Good afternoon, commission chair and commissioners. On Sunday, February 26th, I texted Robert Reynolds to let him know I had a client that needed five acres light industrial in Dallas, Georgia. It was several weeks before Robert could get back to me with a partial answer stating he was waiting on an answer from Polley County Industrial Building Authority. While waiting for a price, I met my client and took him to the North Industrial Park. As I looked around the park, I was totally embarrassed. Numerous phone drain manhole covers were missing. There was not a reasonable lot to build on. I apologized to my client for wasting his time and told him I would go visit the industrial park, the Parkway and Harlem. I visited Harlem. As I looked around, I could not believe anyone would spend money on streets and infrastructure on land with such topographical issues. Let's take a trip down memory lane. In 1986, when economic development was moving forward in Polley County, the IBA built the first 40,000 square foot spec building in Dallas. Polley Commercial Builders was the globe builder and constructed the building. I have been president of Polley Commercial Builders since its inception in 1985. Polley Commercial Builders has completed over 120 projects in Polley County totaling over 1 million square feet. I am all about economic development, but not fictitious economic development. Just a few of Polley Commercial Builders' projects while working in concert with the IBA. 1989, W.W. Henry purchased the spec building from the IBA. PCB contracted for the build-out. W.W. Henry has multiple additions over the years. They pay over $13,000 per year in county taxes and employ numerous employees. 1990, Armstrong World Industries, now Armseil, pays over $27,000 per year in county taxes and employs numerous people. During negotiations for this project, PCB had to agree to complete the plant in 110 days or they were going to move to Carrollton. I agreed and completed the project. 1996, MG International, the largest manufacturing facility in Polley County, pays over $30,000 in taxes and employs numerous employees. Between 2003 and 2005, the Industrial Building Authority refocused their efforts on the pie in the sky airport dream and proceeded to be the bank, the general contractor to get the proposed airport built. The IBA's kickstart was a $4 million interest-free loan to Polley County Airport Authority. Where did the $4 million come from? From that day until now, the IBA has been a failure at economic development in this Polley County. I was at an IBA meeting prior to the building of the hangar at the airport. It was announced that the IBA had to immediately issue contracts to get the hangar built. The IBA already had it rented. The renter was going to be the fixed base operator at the airport at the time. And this fixed base, this FBO was going to put $500,000 toward the building, the hangar, because they were going to eventually purchase the hangar. A contract to grade the log and install all undergrounds for the hangar was awarded to a construction company owned by one of the FBO owners. The same FBO owner of that construction company was personally hired to oversee the building of the hangar and his pay was going to be the amount... The project was brought in under budget. Do you see any conflicts here? But failure was on its way. While the steel structure for the hangar was being erected, the structure collapsed, killing a 32-year-old man. That left a wife and two young children. OSHA cited A.B. Construction Incorporated for serious violation for exposing employees to struck by hazards as the employee failed to provide adequate lateral bracing to the rigid frame north and south direction during the erection of prefabricated steel buildings. Shortly after the accident, the personal contract for the person to oversee the hangar was given a cancellation of contract by the Polley County IBA, but was paid for a building package that was not in any of the contract. The contractor and the FBO that he owned, one half of suddenly disappeared from Polley County. I did an open records request for copies of the proposed lease to the FBO and a copy of the agreement from the FBO to pay the $500,000 toward the building, the hangar. My answer to the open records request was, "We do not have documents responsive to your request." Don't forget the $6 million bond IBA gave to the city of Dallas to run sewer to the airport. The sewer is not being used today. Don't forget the $7 million failed film studio. It is time for a forensic audit of the IBA and the airport authority. Back to the first $4 million loan, it is time to find out how much the airport authority owes the IBA, how much does the IBA owe the taxpayers of Polley County, and what is the real story of what these authorities have done? It is time to get Polley County economic development back on track. Get the IBA out of airport business. I would be glad to meet with any of you to give you ways to get Polley County moving again and economic development. Thank you.
So I'd be glad to meet with any guys to get you back, get Polley County moving and economic development. Ever if you have a solution?
Yes, sir. I've got quite a few solutions I could put on the table. I would be glad to.
I would like to be, we'd like to hear, I mean, I really, we hear a lot of problems, but we heard some today. And normally when people come to you and share with you their concerns and their problems, I like to ask them, "Do you have a solution?" Because normally they've got some kind of idea how they need to fix things, right? If they don't have a solution, I don't think people would be complaining.
There are solutions at hand, just like taking this continent prospect of only four to five acres. I pulled in that park, and I'm telling y'all, I was totally embarrassed that I invited that man into that park. We've got to get a park. There's no reflection here on Robert Reynolds. I've been knowing Robert since he was in W. County. So don't take any bad reflections on Robert. But we have got to get something to sell, just like the gentleman that spoke earlier back here. They've got a corner affair that's flat and ready to sell. Work with these people, bring them to the table. This county can grow and be a model county for the state of Georgia if we will get towards economic development, real economic development. And real economic development, you don't have to give taxpayers. People will line up to come to this county. And I'll be glad to come sit at the table, round table, whatever you want to do, and help put some things on the table.
All right, I'd like to put together a date and maybe have another commission.
Yes, sir. Glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you.
I do agree about the industrial parks. Make a motion that we go into executive sessions for litigation, pending litigation at the request of the tax assessor's office. And I'd like to add personnel to it just in case. And make that motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Colette. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned for executive session. I'll call the open session of the work session back to order. And action taken in the closed session about litigation was to authorize the tax assessor, or the tax assessor to give an authorization to negotiate professional services agreement for the counsel, the legal assistance that that board and office needs. Is there, it's the end of all our business, including the executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? We're adjourned.